Okay, good evening everyone and welcome. This is City Council. Aline, could we have the roll call please?
I'll now take a roll call for the minute. Lord Provost.
Present.
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 I'm here.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Evening, present.
I've had apologies from Councillor Hunter. Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Mills.
Present.
I've had apologies from Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rome.
Present.
Bailey Sawers.
Present.
Councillor Short.
I'm here.
Councillor Smith.
Good evening, I'm here.
I'm here, yes.
Present.
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 She's online.
Can I just say-
I mean, I'm not hearing you guys, but I'm guessing you're saying my name.
Can I just say, half of this sounds like a robot, to be perfectly honest.
I'll continue to say. Councillor Shears.
Evening, I'm here.
I've had apologies from Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
Present.
Evening, present.
I am here, so calling my name, I can't hear you, but I'm here.
I'm guessing you're asking if I'm here, I am, but I can't hear you.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you, Aline. Roger, please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, there are two items of business this evening. Item two, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions? Is this agreed? Thank you. Roger.
Item three, appointments to outside bodies, A, Tayside Contracts Joint Committee. It is reported that Councillor Rome has intimated his resignation as a member and as vice convenor-elect of the Tayside Contracts Joint Committee. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of these vacancies. And Bailey Dawson wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson, please.
Thanks.
Any other nominations? Any questions? Is this agreed?
Sorry, Lord Provost. I have put in the text, I have a point of order. We couldn't hear a word of what Bailey Dawson said. Could I maybe just suggest that we pause for a moment so IT can check the microphones? Because it's quite clear we can't hear half the meeting.
And record purposes.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions? Is this agreed? Agreed, thank you. Roger, please.
Item three, appointments to outside bodies, A, Tayside Contracts Joint Committee. It is reported that Councillor Rome has intimated his resignation as a member and as vice convenor-elect. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of these vacancies. Bailey Dawson wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson, please.
Thanks, Lord Provost. Councillor Mills.
Any other nominations? Any questions? Is this agreed? Thank you, that's agreed. Hopefully that is City Council, thank you.
If you may, I'd like to invite people to climate, environment and biodiversity. I hope there's no issues with people hearing what I'm saying online. So I think if we go through the agenda, please.
Thanks, convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I can see no declarations, so if you can move to the next item.
Thank you. Item two, Dundee's biodiversity action plan annual progress report, and this is for noting.
Okay, so as intimated, the formal report back to the Scottish government on the biodiversity plan is not due until January 2027. So this is just an annual update. We know that next year, 2026, we shall be getting a fuller report explaining how the biodiversity plan fits into the work on nature networks. The key point in, you know, this just highlights some of the achievements in the last year. I just want to express my thanks to the team who did a huge amount of work on the National Watery Heritage Fund Nature Towns and Cities Programme. Great disappointment that that wasn't successful, but the fund was massively oversubscribed. But I know that the team worked incredibly hard on that, so I just wanted to thank them for that work. For the huge amount of work that they did on the nature town. And it was very unfortunate that we didn't get the funding. It looks as though you may have disappeared again. Can you still hear me, Bailey McPherson?
We heard most of that, but there was a gap in the middle. Could I maybe just make a little suggestion here to officers? It may already be done and it's maybe just bad luck today. But I think it would maybe make a degree of sense if there was a bit of a road test 15 minutes prior to committee just in future, just to ensure that we don't encounter these problems. Now, it doesn't guarantee there will not be a problem, but I think it would certainly help.
Bailey McPherson, I couldn't hear all of that. I mean, this report is just for noting, so I don't know if there are any questions or whether people are just happy to note the report and will at least get through this committee.
There's two questions.
Two questions on the screen.
I just wanted to ask about the action that continues to be carried forward with nothing being done or nothing able to be done because of the lack of funding, and that's with the controlling the grey squirrel population. It always says that potential funding streams continue to be explored. So I just wondered, without any funding coming in for that, what we're actually doing currently to control the grey squirrel population in Dundee? And what impact not taking action to deal with the grey squirrel is having on the red squirrel population that we have?
Can I just hand over to Mr Boyle to respond?
Thanks very much, convenor. Thanks, Bailey Scott, for the question. I don't know if I've got a definitive response I can give you just now, I'm just going to check with Catherine. If you can let us come back, you'll come back with a detailed response. Thank you.
That fine, Bailey Scott. I can see that I've also got a question from Councillor Black.
Yes, thank you. On page six of the report, it talks about wetlands. And one of the projects is to identify all rivers and ponds managed by the council. Does that include anything that's in a culvert? Any culverted rivers, like for example the Ensburn?
Mr Boyle, with that.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks for the question, Councillor Black. Rivers and ponds, it mainly relates to the larger bodies of water, but it's something that I can check and come back to you on, whether it does incorporate culverts.
Thank you.
Okay, and apologies to Councillor Creighton, you were further up my list, so if I could come back to you with your question, please.
Thank you, convenor. No worries, there's clearly some issues tonight. Just a question, at 4.7 in the report, there's an update on the management of ash dieback with over 3,000 trees mapped. Just a few questions on this, just asking, does it cover all ash trees in the city? Is the mapping complete? How many of these are high risk and what's the time scales? And lastly, with regards to contracted works, last financial year, how many risk diseased trees were in fact tackled? I know there's a few questions in there.
I'm hoping that, is it Miss Catherine? I'll bring Catherine to respond to those questions. Thanks, Councillor Creighton.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Councillor Creighton, for your question. So I can confirm that all of the ash trees in the city are mapped through a tree management system. And we continuously resurvey the trees that we have in the city. I can provide you more details and statistics on the number of trees. And to fully answer your question, I'll table it, if that's okay.
I think if you can ask for that to be circulated to all members, that would be useful. Okay, and I have a final question from Councillor Short.
Thank you very much, convenor. Just a little point with regards to the local Friends of group. Those of us who are in Maryfield had a number of emails last week with regards to the Friends of Batster Park. And a little bit of, I think there's been changes in personnel, so they have lost their original contact. Can we just confirm that that relationship will be smoothed over? The work that the Friends do across the whole of the city is exceptional. And we would hate to see them getting a wee bit skunnered if they don't have that correct contact, please.
Thanks, Councillor Short. Yeah, happy to confirm we've got relations restored.
And then the last thing I want to just bring to everyone's attention was one of the things we managed to do this year to try and increase nature literacy. Some of you will have heard me talk about the fact that we've done a lot on carbon literacy, but we need to do work on nature literacy so people understand why biodiversity is doing such a job for us. But every councillor in Dundee got a map of their ward and all the initiatives that have been undertaken in their ward. And there is now a GIA story map, so you can basically go online, click that link, see what's happening in your ward and deal directly with the officers if you want to follow anything up. But the point was to, rather than just deal with habitats, to actually see what's happening in Cold Side, what's happening in Maryfield, to make sure that all the councillors were fully aware of that. So we hope that's going to be useful. I can, okay, I can see that Councillor Duncan can no longer see the meeting. That might not be a great loss, but hopefully you can hear what's happened. So I'll take it that we are noting this report? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a hopefully smooth, fair work economic growth and infrastructure committee. Can we hold the first item, please, Aline?
Thanks, convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Just give it a minute. See, there's a declaration from item three. Councillor Duncan?
Yep, thanks, convenor. No, it's just that I'm actually a member of the Friends of Barnhill Rock Garden. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Duncan. We'll just move on then, please, Aline.
Item two, extension of current football parking zone. This item's been placed on the agenda at the request of Councillor Lynn.
I don't see any questions currently, Councillor Lynn. I'll just pass directly over to you, please.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, convenor, and thanks for the opportunity to bring this item to committee. Just move the mic a little bit. Yeah, as members will be aware, the football parking zone around Tannadice and Denns has been in operation now for the last two seasons, beginning in August of 2023. The scheme aims to make life easier for residents around the- The scheme aims to make life easier for residents around the two grounds by restricting parking to residents only on match days, and permits can be obtained free of charge by anyone living within that area. The introduction of this scheme has been really beneficial to people in that area, as Dundee is unique in having two grounds in very close proximity to each other. This means that it's not unusual during the season to have three days in one week where there are games, with there usually being one of our two sides at home at the weekend and frequently a midweek game too. This means a considerable influx of vehicles for several hours either side of kick-off time, which without the scheme would be tremendously disruptive. Clearly, the football parking zone must end somewhere. But I've been contacted by many residents of Strathmore Street, Tannadice Street, Clappington Street and Woolsley Street, all within my ward, as they felt it unfair that their streets, despite being closer to the two grounds than much of the existing zone, were excluded. Indeed, a look at the map of the zone almost gives the impression that it was left out in error, which I know isn't the case, as I believe it was delineated based on streets which were previously called off on match days. Having said that, the overarching purpose of the scheme is to minimise disruption to residents on match days. And with my constituents living so close to the two grounds, I strongly believe that it's in the interest of fairness that their streets are also included in the zone. I hope that councillors will agree and that my constituents can enjoy the benefits already afforded to those who live within the current zone. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that, councillor Lynn.
Thank you, Convena. Councillor Lynn, do you wish us to circulate your motion at this stage?
Yeah, I thought because it was on the agenda, that was it circulated.
I can arrange for committee services to circulate it now.
Thanks very much for that, Mr Many. Councillor Lynn?
You don't want to say all that again, do you?
No, you're okay. Okay, I presume everyone can see that, so we'll just go ahead with questions. I can see councillor Short is seconding you. And so can you, councillor Short, are bringing you in the end to form a second. So move to councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. There's been significant press coverage recently highlighting the lack of enforcement of existing regulations in this area. Should we agree to extend these regulations to cover four additional streets? What additional enforcement resource will be deployed to ensure the extension results in an improvement in parking for residents?
Excellent question, councillor McHugh. I don't think there's a lack of enforcement, and I think that the whole point of these zones, indeed with all road traffic offences, is a deterrent effect. We don't expect a police, sorry, a traffic official to turn up for every single infraction, but the threat of that is what makes democracy work, what makes law and legal things work. But I'll bring in Mr McNamara, who I believe is online to answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you for the question, councillor McHugh. I can confirm that we do enforce all games. If this extension wants to go ahead, we would increase resourcing to make sure that we can cover the zone to the same basis as we're covering the existing zone at the moment.
Thanks, Mr McNamara. Do you mind if I move on, councillor McHugh? Thank you very much. Councillor Shearer's got a comment.
Thank you, Convena. And just like councillor Lynn, I've had many inquiries about the parking, or should I say, the lack of parking for the residents in the area, particularly on match days. And far be it from agreeing with councillor Lynn, the quote that was hitting the courier. I actually said I would err on the side of residents, and I stand by that, given the amount of inquiries I've had in relation to the park. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor McHugh. Councillor Crichton, I believe, you're next.
Thank you, Convena. Our group appreciates the point that councillor Lynn is making about the full length of Strathmore Street, Tannadice Street, Clappington Street and Woolsley Street. However, we do think it is important, particularly given the concerns raised by football fans and at least one of the football clubs, that the operational, the full scheme must be regularly reviewed by the roads team to assess if it's working and working as it's intended to do so. And it is important that issues around the overall operation of the scheme and any specific issues, such as signage, are subject to review by officers.
That's councillor Crichton. I think that's a fair comment, and I think officers are aware that the scheme is reviewed every now and then, just to see as, you know, similar schemes, that everything is working as it should. So thanks very much. Bailey Keenan, you have a next question, please.
I'm not looking to divide on it as the local councillors that are asking for it. But I have got some concerns that if we're looking to address the issues around the football grounds, then should we not be looking at what buses turn up there to take people to and from the ground on match days? You know, both the clubs have a number of season ticket holders. Each of them will have their address, so it's known where people stay. Yet we've not done anything to address that modal shift from the car to a bus or some other kind of transport. So I'm not sure whether we keep on dishing out tickets. I mean, it's a nice earner for a city that's cash strapped. But I also see on a regular match day, for one team, obviously, no there at both of them. But on one where there's a number of other parking infringements, such as parking on double yellow lines, parking on corners, parking on pavements, everything that there is legislation in place to deal with the parking issue. But I don't see many tickets on their cars. It just seems to be a real focus on the few streets. No, so I'm not sure that we solve the problem while we allow the other type of parking to go on. So, you know, there needs to be a wider look at the scheme. You know, if we keep on dishing out tickets, then it's not been a deterrent either. So we need to look at that modal shift to get people on a bus.
Thanks, Mr Bailey Keenan. I appreciate your point you're making about modal shift, and I would say that to my knowledge, officers engage regularly with the bus operators to try and maximise the number of people using the bus to get to the grounds. In terms of deterrence, as I say, every kind of crime has that deterrent effect. We, the society exists based on a deterrent, and we're never going to get everyone to stop all forms of crime. All we can do is enforce, but as I say, we can't enforce every single infraction. But maybe we just pass over to Mr McNamara to see if he's got any other comment on that.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Your points are correct. We do enforce and we also do try and enforce out with the zone. The difficulty is that it's quite a great, large area out with the zone, and it's the resourcing to manage that. As the original committee report, which was approved for the introduction of the football events parking zone, noted, we weren't expecting modal shift from it. We do try and deal with the bus companies, the football clubs and so forth to promote sustainable transport to the games. However, being realistic, a number of the supporters are coming from out with Dundee as well, and they will continue to drive to the games as well.
Thanks, Mr McNamara. I can see you've got your finger on the button, Bailey Keenan. Do you want to come back in?
In light of the responses I've just received, then, you know, if our real focus has only been on the streets that are part of the zone now, then does it merit making that level of change without obviously seeing how you would police the other areas that I suggest, such as the double yellows and the parking on pavements, without having to introduce a much wider zone?
Thanks, Bailey. Not quite clear on your points to whether you're still supporting the motion or not, sorry.
I'm still happy to support it. We're just really looking for officers' opinion. If you were, it was suggested by Michael Crichton earlier that the project should be reviewed. I'm not sure it has been reviewed, not sure it's working if we keep on giving out fines. So, you know, I'm just wondering whether, because there's been a focus on the few streets, that these other ones where there is other illegal parking going on have been somewhat ignored. And we should have been focused on that wider area around without needing to introduce another number of streets.
Okay, thanks, Bailey Keenan. I'll just pass back to Mr McNamara and then bring in councillor Shears after that. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. It's really a matter of resource, particularly with the extent of where people will fix how far away they will park on football days, going right the way up to Clappington Road and further afield. So again, with it being a two-hour window for the games, deploying all resources, it's very difficult to get around that extent. As I say, we do deploy quite considerable resource towards us, far more than we do for any other form of parking, traffic management schemes anyway. But take on board your points. We do also review annually as well, and we have introduced things like additional signage. And we do that in conjunction with the stakeholders as well.
Thanks, Mr McNamara. I think that's very helpful. Councillor Shears, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. And my question is about regarding the work of fan support and food banks. I'm sure all members are aware of their work. It's now been three seasons and the work they do across the city is absolutely fantastic. And most volunteers do come by car as the food that we collect then needs to be manually loaded into the car and taken to the respective food larder that's been worked with that week. I'm just wondering if officers would have consideration to grant in a permit to one car for the lead organiser, and there's also a van being arranged soon. And just so that the food bank collections can do their work effectively and not need to worry about getting a ticket, because it can take sort of ten, fifteen minutes after the game's kicked off sometimes, and before all the food is loaded and taken away.
Thank you, councillor Shears. Mr McNamara, is this something going to be looked at and a response got back?
Yeah, certainly. I wasn't aware of this, but if they're welcome to apply, I will certainly engage with them and consider any requests for dispensation. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thanks very much. I've got Bailey Scott next, please.
Thanks, Convena. I'm just wondering about the way this has been done, because normally before we agree to traffic regulation orders, there's a, the promotion of them. We get a report from the department initially to say that this is as a result of an assessment that's been done or ongoing complaints that they've received. And then in a professional view, they feel that additional traffic orders are required. And that's what happened on this occasion. It's come as a result of a local member raising it, and I totally appreciate the local members know the wards extremely well and will know where the issues are. But it seems to me that a step has been missed out in this process. And whether that will be included when we get to the report coming back, they will also include an assessment from the officers about the impact this current restrictions have had and whether they've had any complaints from residents and what their professional view is about introducing additional traffic orders, because that, to me, that seems to be missing. And I would like to get a professional opinion from the officers about whether or not this traffic order is merited.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. I'll bring in Mr McNamara and then Mr Many, just keep us right, please. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Just to clarify, as I mentioned, we do review the scheme annually in conjunction with stakeholders, and we don't recommend extending it. The reasons for that, while very much understanding the difficulties for the residents in these streets, it does provide a capacity for parking. So we estimate around about eighty cars. The number of properties is about twenty percent of the existing scheme. So again, we're very much viewing this as it would just displace onto streets within a wider area in a greater displacement, but it would move the problem onto a new set of streets and a new set of residents. We do also receive complaints from all sides of the zone about problematic parking and requests for extension of the zone as well. So again, there is a consideration around gradual creep. And as we've already been discussing this evening, there is quite a wide, larger area, and it's where this could eventually end, I suppose.
Thank you, Mr McNamara. Mr Many, could you just confirm that the motion is competent?
Thank you, Convena. Three points that I would make in response to Bailey Scott's query. First of all, I am satisfied that this motion is competent, and therefore it would be appropriate, should the committee so wish to pass it tonight. The second point I would make is that the motion which has been circulated by councillor Lynn proposes a procedure which all elected members should have had the opportunity to consider. The third point I would make is if that procedure is not acceptable to members, my suggestion would be to defer consideration of this matter, that it be brought back to future committee along with comments from relevant officers. That would be an alternative and would require to be moved as an amendment.
Thank you, Mr Many. I'm going to bring in Bailey McPherson. But first, Alan, could you please tick down the text of the motion so that we can see online people? Thanks. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Convena. In a way, Mr McNamara actually has answered my question, which was, I thought councillor Crichton made a good point about regular review and some of the comments from Bailey Keenan sort of reinforced that. If I picked up Mr McNamara correctly, he said this is subject to annual review. Can I just confirm, Mr McNamara? Is that prior to the start of each season, that you'll take a look at how it's operating, what the signage is like? You know, the area covered and such like, just ensure that as councillor Crichton said, the overall operation, the scheme is working as intended?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, I can confirm that's correct. In addition to the annual end of season review, we also hold post-match ops meetings with the football clubs and police as well. That's very much more on the operation of it. But again, that means that we don't have to wait for things like coach parking or disabled facilities and so forth for an annual review. We'll implement change mid-year if there's anything that's operationally not working on top of that as well.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that, Mr McNamara. Councillor Flynn, have you got a comment? And I'll bring in councillor Short after that to second.
Thanks very much, Convena. It's probably is the work, one of the work councillors for the Coeside area where most of this parking enforcement is done within the actual, on the foot to football stadiums. I think I'd like to feed back to the committee that residents feel it works relatively well for them, considering what it was like before. Because remember, there's a lot of vehicles in that area belong to residents. And we're actually got to look after their interests as well as the football clubs. And this was done, if Mr McNamara might want to confirm this, this was done under lots of consideration and discussions with many stakeholders before this process was put in place. And I think there's much to be said about carrying out the annual review. I would probably say it's improved year on year. I think it's important to recognise that. We've also got to go through a T R O process, as Bailey Scott touched upon, and I think that will feed back a lot of what's been said by residents in many areas around that section of what's been proposed by councillor Lynn and councillor Shop. And I think that's got to be recognised as well, because this whole context of this is actually to encourage, as Bailey Keenan touched upon, modal shift. And Explored Dundee have tried to make sure that and encourage people to go on the bus if they show their season ticket of air call correctly. So there's steps being done to progress this as slowly as possible, but as slowly as it does, but quickly as possible. And I think the sustainable transport aspect of this is really important. But we've got to always think of residents in this particular case. I'm quite willing to support the three ward councillors on this particular issue to see, go through the T R O process in the first instance to see what comes back. And I'm sure this will bring back a report to committee through your own committee, Convena, in the near future. Probably, but we'll have to do their consultation, because I think consultation is really important on this. But let's not be mistaken of why people are getting enforcement tickets. It's because they're parking in the zone where they're not meant to be parking at a particular time. It's not as if it's closed off for the whole day. It's closed off for a period of time through or over a period of a football match. And I think that's got to be recognised. There'll always be people who will try to park closer to the stadium, knowing well that they'll get a ticket. That's got to be considered, but to the impact of the residents. And I think it's important to recognise there's always that one, that all opportunity is always going to happen, disappointing as it is, because people don't want to walk. And I think even in my own personal circumstances, I've got to walk in a certain distance as well, and it's one of these things that's impacted on me as a a season ticket holder, one of the clubs. So I really appreciate what's been said here, but I think it's important that we go through the whole process and support the colleagues within the Maryfield ward to make sure this process sticks ahead. And I think it's important that we see what the consultation brings back from the T R O. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Flynn. A number of important points in there, especially going back to the consultation of residents in the area. I'll just bring in councillor Shop to second formally. Thank you.
So I'm old enough to remember when not everybody had a car. And going to football, you probably had a bonnet, a pipe and a knitted scarf. These days have definitely changed, but we should be thinking about that modal shift as Bailey Keenan has said. I know that United have in the last couple of seasons put in new bike holding opportunities for people who want to cycle into the match. I know a couple of people who do that. And we seen, we seen, we saw at the weekend buses shuttling people up to camper down. And perhaps that's something that we should be looking at, some sort of shuttle bus that takes people up to Tannadice and Dens. And then finally, and dare I say, if we had a park and ride in the city, then people coming in from Angus and Perthencan Ross and Fife, who are Dundee supporters and Arabs could park their car and they could be shuttled in from there. And one of the things that my two colleagues have said from the Maryfield Ward is about the proximity and the fairness. And the fairness thing is a really big question because as we know, and it'll be highlighted tonight in the neighbourhood services paper, St Albans West is one of those areas that is part of a fairness initiative. And what can't be fairer than allowing the people of St Albans West to not be exposed to car fumes on a weekly or fortnightly basis. I think the three of us who have talked to this from the Coleside, from the Maryfield Ward, I think it's really important that we are the voice of the voiceless and I hope the rest of the committee will agree with this. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that, councillor Short. I don't believe anyone is moving against this item, so it couldn't be agreed? apologies. Bailey Scott, do you want back in?
I would like to defer my decision on this for a later date as per the wording that Mr Menne had said would be appropriate. I'll allow a defer. I'm not doubting at all the competency of the motion. Or the concern that has been expressed to the local councillors by the residents there. But to my mind, there is something missing in this, and that's a report from the officers that have done an assessment of a request for a traffic order to be raised and the impact that might be and using their best judgment as to whether or not they think one's needed there or not. So I'm going to ask for defer it for as long, I don't know how long it would take to do that, a month or two months, but the appropriate time to allow it to come back at a future date. And then we have all the information available to us, I think, to allow us to come to a decision as to whether we should be asking officers to promote a traffic order there or not. And if I don't have a second now, I would ask for my dissent to be recorded.
Thanks very thanks very much, Bailey Scott. I don't see a second there, so I'm sure that can be recorded. Thank you. And that being said, can we move on to the next item, please, Alan?
That's Convena. That takes us on to item three, Nature Restoration Fund 2526. You have this for approval.
So the purpose of this report is present summary of a sourcing strategy as part of the Nature Restoration Fund 2526 programme and seek approval toward the contracts. Some really interesting programs in here, including Barnham Rock Garden improvements, which was referenced earlier, and biodiversity planting right across the city. I believe councillor Duncan, you would like a comment on this one?
Yeah, thanks, Convena. I'll be mercifully brief because I can't actually see these proceedings, but never mind. I'll try logging in again after this one. It's just the way of regard to the Barnham Hill Rock Garden item. I know that the friends of Barnham Hill Rock Garden and many members of the public have been keen over recent years to see the restoration of the water features, which is always a popular feature in these rock gardens. So very pleased to see this coming forward. And just we would to commend both the friends and the council for showing us all yet again how a positive collaboration between a dedicated bunch of volunteers and the council can actually produce excellent results. And this is certainly one of them and possibly a lesson for the how, you know, similar success stories might be done elsewhere in the city.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. I agree wholeheartedly with your comments. It's a great example of community groups in the council working hand in hand. So thank you for that. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Convena. And again, positive comments from myself in relation to other items within this particular substantive item, really in relation to both Newhall Gardens and the Western Cemetery. In the case of Newhall Gardens, this all came about because of a resident's idea of having something from a biodiversity point of view, along a very long green grass strip that exists down the middle of this particular street. And I thank the department for meeting with them and the outcome of this are ornamental and native bulbs, which I think will be of benefit to everyone locally in that part of the community. In the case of Western Cemetery, and the Western Cemetery Association was very keen to see this happen and they're particularly keen to see bulbs to prolong the pollinating season being planted. So again, I think a very positive project. I will just mention one thing that a member of the Western Cemetery Association mentioned to me. I don't expect a response from officers. I just leave the thought with them. But not that far from Western Cemetery, which is one of the older cemeteries and not certainly, there is an even older cemetery, which is also Dundee City Council owned and maintained, which is in front of St Peter's Church in St Peter's Street. And certainly that member of the Western Cemetery Association would be very keen to see a similar type project when resources allow take place in the area of the St Peter's Church graveyard where that to be possible. So I did say I would pass on the suggestion, Convena, and perhaps officers can give it some thought in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Officer in the room heard you, so I'm sure they'll give that some thought, as you say, when resources become available. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you. St Albans Biowiversity Initiative, there is a gap site that sits off Mainz Lawn. And my understanding historically is that it belongs to a number of properties around. It's in lots of title deeds. So it can never be bought and built upon, but within there, there's an incredible amount of biodiversity. But a lot of people would like to see it all cut down and made bonny like a bowling green. And I just wondered if there could be some kind of emphasis in that area just to show the biodiversity that's there supporting that healthy lung for these new houses that have been put together in Mainz Lawn. And I'm probably looking at the wrong table when I'm looking at the guys at the front and should be looking at Catherine. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Short. I was going to ask Catherine Conlon if she wants to comment at all.
Thanks, Convena. Thank you, councillor Short. Yeah, just to confirm, we'll definitely look at that site and come back to you. Okay.
Thanks very much. I don't see any further comments on this item, so can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Next item, please, Alan.
Item four, annual road safety report and 20 mile per hour progress report. You have this for approval.
So this item provides a summary of progress towards national road cancer reduction targets and seeks approval of a programme of road safety improvements. The report also provides updates on the monitoring of school street zones and the progression of 20 mile per hour zones. Councillor Coleman, you've got a question?
Thank you, Mr Convena. A question on the phasing of the 20 mile an hour zones. What's the rationale for the order of implementation? I've had lots of requests, I'm sure of more colleagues have too, from areas like Sherbrook, Brackins and Clattle Woods. But these areas are towards the bottom of the list with no fixed date to when the 20 mile an hour zone would be implemented. Is there any possibility of funding, perhaps external, to allow phases five to seven to be any earlier or at least given certainty on an implementation date?
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Let's just pass over to Mr McNamara. But what we'd say is, you know, we're always happy to progress these schemes and if funding became available faster, I'm sure that's something that officers would be keen to progress. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. It is noted in the report what the rationale for the basing is and it takes on board a number of different considerations around road safety, number of inquiries and so forth as well. In terms of additional funding, we have bid in and we're still waiting to hear back from Transport Scotland for current year funding. And that's a strategy we'll continue to do is try and increase up the funding for 20 mile an hour measures. On terms of the overall funding, which is in the report, there are a number of competing demands. We're trying to tackle accident cluster sites and other road safety interventions as well. So it does constrain the amount of funding that we can put towards one type of intervention with there being a number of road safety related measures that we do need to progress.
Thanks, Mr McNamara. Hope that gives you some reassurance, councillor Coleman.
Yes, thank you very much.
Councillor Flynn, please. You've got a question, the con.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. The information in the report's really helpful with regards to what's happened over the last period of time. With both the actual accident reports and also the school street zones, which I'll come on to in a second, if that's okay. I like to ask the officers with regards to the rise within the pedestrian accidents, especially, especially and also the child serious casualties. Going in the wrong direction to be completely fair and disappointingly so, bearing in mind that children are getting injured. But can, we all know that 20 mile an hour zones and the benefits from these with regards to reduced accident levels and injury levels. But is there something we're missing here with regards to the increases? I know they're small, but they are in the wrong direction and we've got a target to meet. I'm just wondering if there's any mitigations or any other influences we have to do within the road network system to try and minimize as as what we should be doing with regards to the pedestrian and children, especially the accident levels. And if I just took the second one and at the same time, if that's okay, Convena. With regards to the school street zones, there's a number of them are far exceeding three figures. And I think that's the disappointing side of things, a process and a policy we put in within this council to make it safer for children in front of the schools. And I'm disappointed to see the number of schools where we're still seeing vehicles just randomly drive through, putting children at risk as they go to school. And I just wondered if the officers can come back and explain what work is being done to try and mitigate these issues and trying to reduce the number of vehicles going through the school street zones, please.
Thanks very much, councillor Flynn. I think in reverse order, I know there's a lot of positive engagement at the moment with Police Scotland regarding enforcement, which is a really encouraging sign. And obviously, we're all very concerned about the increase in road traffic accidents. But I'll pass over to Mr McNamara to maybe go into that a bit further. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Regarding the school streets, we do the A's very closely with Police Scotland. And certainly when we undertake enforcement action, we support them at all those events where they are undertaking enforcement. Police Scotland are committed to enforcement of the school street zones and do have a plan in place for doing the enforcement. We're in very regular dialogue with them about the ability to ramp that up and do more enforcement. Another important part of it is that the majority of those driving into the zones are parents with children at schools. And there's noted in the report, there's a lot of soft touch measures that we're doing, both with pupils and with the community as well, to really try and emphasize the benefits of the zone as well. If you'd like, I can comment on the accident statistics as well. As noted in the report, the road infrastructure is only one part of the reason for road accidents. And there's a number of stakeholders which are involved in trying to reduce roads accidents. And a lot of it does unfortunately stem down to driver behaviour and road user behaviour, including pedestrians. With specific regard to the increase in child serious accidents out of the nine, when we looked into it, very unfortunately, seven of them were stop, look and listen accidents, which could have been avoidable. Another one was a 15 year old pedestrian passenger on an off-road motorbike. So again, these are the types of accidents where road infrastructure can only play so much of a part. And the other stakeholders also have a vested interest in terms of education, enforcement and a variety of other things.
Thanks very much for that comprehensive answer, Mr McNamara. Any further comment, councillor? No, thank you very much. I'll go to councillor Short, please.
Seven point three in the report with regards to pedestrian guardrails. For a long time, they've been a real bugbear of mine, so this brings a real joy to my heart. And presumably now that we have pavement parking, this will mean that if we do remove them for our increased footway widths and a more open streetscape, there will be a follow up with pavement parking fines so that people don't take advantage of these pedestrian barriers. Please.
Thanks very much, councillor Short. I'm sure that'll be the case, but I'll just get Mr McNamara to confirm.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. So what we've noted in the report is not a mass exodus of getting rid of pedestrian guardrails. They do serve a very useful purpose. But for one of the reasons which councillor Short highlighted, they've not always been installed for their desired purpose about moving people on busy roads to more preferable crossing locations. Sometimes they have been installed for reasons like stopping people parking on pavement. What we're doing is when they come for renewal or replacement, we're just doing a thorough assessment of the requirement to keep them. The expectation is the vast majority of them will stay. But things do change. Streetscapes do move locations, facilities and so forth over time. The guardrails tend to stay. So it's really just noting that we'll be doing a thorough review under the design standard for whether or not the requirement's still there for the guardrails before we just replace them.
Ask him, Mr McNamara. I don't see any further questions on this report, so can it be agreed? Thank you very much. Next item, please, Alan.
Item five, St Mary's Drainage Strategy, St Leonard's Park, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of a sourcing strategy to commence with the procurement exercise for the design and tender process associated with the St Mary's drainage strategy at St Leonard's Park. Sorry, a few typos in my briefing that we got there in the end. I think this is one of those few unmitigated good stories. It takes a number of boxes. It leverages an external funding, improves the amenity of the area, builds an active travel path for a school, increases drainage capacity in the area. And so I would hope that this would meet with the universal approval of members. But I can see councillor Coleman, you've got a question, so I'll bring you in, please.
Thank you, Mr Convena. Can I ask, when is estimated the final tender price will come back to committee for approval? Just to ensure that the intended start date of construction in 2027 is not in any way delayed.
Thanks for the question, councillor Coleman. Mr Martin?
Thanks, Convena. Thanks for the question, councillor Coleman. In terms of, it would be the latter part of 2026 that we'd be looking to come back to committee. That said, as the sourcing strategy is written, it's non-specific for a particular reason, just so in terms of as the design is developed, funding secured and the tender documents are put in place, we've got a bit of flexibility for that. So I would suggest late 26, early 27.
Thanks for that, Mr Martin. Does that answer your question, councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to associate myself with your remarks about how positive this will be for the area.
Thank you. Okay, thanks again. Councillor Black, please.
Thanks, Convena. It's a really interesting scheme. I think it's going to be of great benefit and certainly help to alleviate flooding. One of the interesting things about it is it will open up a water course and will have an open burn in that area. And this is something I've been interested in for a long time. Dundee is actually full of burns that are culverted. I believe there's 22 kilometres of culverted water courses in the city. And it seems to be a rational policy initiative to open up culverted burns. The pressure that builds up in a culvert when there are flooding events like the one we had in the last couple of weeks, the big thunderstorm, is a maze. And there are also these other benefits of having opened up water courses, which involve biodiversity, which involve healthier conditions for the aquatic life that live in these things. And which enables the city to cheer up a bit because it will have actual open water courses instead of concrete streets. There is one thing which I am concerned about with the St Leonard's scheme, and it's the only thing, which is potential for dangerous areas where children might fall into the water. And I would like some reassurance that when the scheme is being designed in detail, that safety measures will be designed in so that there won't be steep banks, for example, that people can fall down, that kind of thing. So thank you, Convena.
No, thank you, councillor Black. I'll just pass over to Mr Martin again and see if he can advise on that.
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, councillor Black. Yes, I can confirm that in terms of the design development taken forward, consideration will be given to the safety particularly of young members of the public.
Thanks very much. Councillor Anderson, got a comment?
We're just welcoming this report. As it says in the report, it's received national recognition about best practice and innovative work. So it's great Dundee's doing this. We had a really useful briefing this morning on the climate view strategy tool, the tool for measuring interventions on climate change. So it was good for some councillors to be able to attend that. I've been asking for some time for Um I've been asking for some time for a briefing for office, for councillors about the Water Resilient Dundee Strategy. We just think there is interest in the work that we're doing across the city and the fact that it's been copied by other cities. So it might be worth offering a briefing for councillors to say this is what we're doing and this is the plan for the whole of the city.
Thanks very much for that. And the briefing this morning was very interesting as well. Indeed, we didn't get through all the material they had for us because we asked them so many questions. So I think just an indication of how interested this council is in in leading on the environment in that. Uh councillor Flynn, please. Um okay, I don't see any further questions on this item. So can this be agreed? Okay, thanks very much. Next item, please, Arlene.
Next, tenders received by city development. This is for approval.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of four tenders with a combined expenditure in the region of a million pounds for construction and infrastructure work across the city. These tenders include new playpark equipment at Baxter Park, a pilot project for remediation of rack at Adler Primary School, staff cycle storage at Care Hall and Central Library, and upgrading works to the green circular between Drunky Road and the footbridge to Baloney Drive. Uh councillor Coleman, you've got a question on this?
Thank you, Mr Kevina. With regard to the Adler Primary School rack remedial works, I'm pleased to note that the school can continue to operate during this work. But can I ask if there'll be any loss of teaching space and then any impact on teaching delivery during the works? And if so, how is this being addressed?
Thanks councillor Coleman. I'll maybe pass over to Mr Martin to see if he can answer that one.
Thanks, Kevina. So in terms of the works that have been carried out, they'll be in isolated areas. And city engineers in conjunction with child and family staff in the school will be working to ensure that any spaces that are required would interrupt with the teaching for the staff and pupils.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Uh don't see any further question. Oh councillor Short, please.
I was just looking if you could perhaps send over a copy of what the Baxter Park installation would look like. Uh my imagination isn't very good and just seeing it on paper written down, if you've got pictures, it would be most appreciated, please.
Mr Martin, if you could send that round?
Yeah, happy to confirm we'll we'll send that round members.
Thank you. Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks, Kevina. Just touch upon the green circular active travel improvements. I think that's really welcomed across many parts. And I think people will see the benefits of active travel. We've touched upon it earlier with regards to the football and encouraging people to be more healthier and use active travel more. And this one is actually connecting up the Douglas and the community campus with lighted areas etc. And it's really welcome that what we're actually doing and continue to improve some of our infrastructure. Bearing in mind, we've got a Cycling Scotland Conference coming next month as well. And I think it just goes to show the commitment to ensure that active travel, sustainable transport is very much high on the agenda. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comments, councillor Flynn. I couldn't agree more. Uh and I look forward to seeing the improved pathway connecting up the back of my world, the north east as well, uh with the new school and the indeed Douglas area. Uh councillor Dawson, please.
Thanks, Kevina. Very similar topic in relation to the Difte footpath. There is quite a lot of use of that footpath to the east towards the Sainsbury's end as well as just the connection into Baloney Drive. Just wondering then therefore if there was any plans to do anything with that particular section beyond the footbridge to Baloney Drive, because that's also heavily used and in places could seriously do with an upgrade as well.
Uh thanks for raising that. Uh councillor Dawson, pass over to Mr McNamara. I'm not aware that there is anything at present, but Mr McNamara?
Thank you, Kevina. Um I can confirm there's nothing at present. However, um we are looking at all areas of the green circular for improvement. Um some are more deliverable and some are more challenging than others. Um but we have identified the section over to the point of concern raised uh by councillor Dawson.
Thanks very much. I don't see any further questions or comments on this item. So can item six be agreed? Thanks very much. Next item, please, Arlene.
Thank you. Item seven, UK Shared Prosperity Fund Annual Report. UK Shared Prosperity Fund Annual Report twenty four twenty five. This is for noting.
Thanks very much, Arlene. I was hoping we'd get smoothly through the Fair Work and Economic Growth Committee there, but we did have a bit of an IT glitch or ghost again. Can I just check that people online can hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Thanks very much for confirming Bailey McPherson. Uh yes, so as Arlene has just said, item seven. Uh this report provides members with an update on the delivery of Dundee's shared prosperity investment plan during twenty twenty four twenty five, providing summary of the various interventions that have been supported and committee is asked to note the report. Uh is there any comments on item seven? I don't see any, so can this be agreed?
Sorry, sorry, Kevina. It's in the it's in the text. Um I think I was first and councillor Short was second.
Apologies, Bailey McPherson. Uh not seeing it, but I think I've just missed it because there's subsequent comments. So Bailey McPherson first and councillor Short.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, I think this is a useful report. I'm I'm quite interested in the ongoing support the shared prosperity fund um has been given to the uh employability area. Um obviously, we've had a long issue of underemployment in the city vis-à-vis the both the Scottish and UK average. And I know it's an area that the uh director of city development has taken a close um interest in. I think it would be really useful um if officers would be prepared to consider giving us a briefing paper on um current initiatives within the employability team and frankly, just how well it is going. Because it is a vitally important um area, particularly for tho- those who have been long term unemployed. And I would just be really interested if um officers would be prepared to give us uh an updated briefing paper on the whole employability pathway and how well it is currently working.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I couldn't agree more with your comments. I think employability is an extremely important area of focus for the city. And indeed, as you say, uh the executive director. I'll pass over to Mr Presswood, but I'd imagine there'd be no issues with a member briefing, but Mr Presswood?
Chair, very happy to do so. Um and also to remind members that there is a um now, uh I can't actually remember, but there is a seminar uh at some point early September. I'll send members around details of that, and that includes the opportunity to find out more about the range of employability activity uh going on in the city. And I should add, uh as well as the items detailed within this paper, um there has been a corporate review which has merged the youth and the adult employability teams. Um and that took a long time to make sure that it was done properly and uh with um staff and users both consulted significantly. Uh we've also had another exercise jointly with all the services in the council around youth participation, because I think as a number of members are very well aware, uh it's perhaps the the hardest challenge that we have around employability. Because for many years Dundee suffered as the worst uh place for youth participation. Um but now we are improving um slowly but surely. Um so there's a number of initiatives which I'm sure members will wish to be briefed on. So I'll send out the invitation again uh for those who haven't seen it.
Thanks very much, uh Mr Presswood. I think that's extremely helpful. And again, just to agree with you and Bailey McPherson, it's a very key area of focus. And as Mr Presswood has said, uh youth unemployment in particular, or even underemployment, and keeping track of people, making sure they don't fall through any gaps, because um that's where you create problems for the future as well. We don't want any uh missed chances. So I think it's very important everyone is informed and possible of the good work that's going on within Dundee and hold heartily endorse the idea of a member briefing. Uh I'm sure we'll get that uh update sent round members. Okay, uh I believe councillor Short, you're next.
Thank you, Kevina. Um multiply uh four point one oh and four eleven. Um it's just a point of congratulations and thinking smartly and outside the box with regards to um the organisations that have delivered um a phenomenal amount of um courses and to a great number of people over the term of that uh that project. Um I did turn up a couple of weeks ago at Cans and Carate to take part in Balanced Lives, thinking it was part of the multiply challenge um funding, but actually it was about exercise. Um so there I was in my my two-piece suit and a shirt, exercising and sweating on a hot day uh in Maryfields, but there you go, nothing new there. However, as I say, very, very much appreciated this outside the box thinking, because it's where we can capture people who are really delivering to the communities that they know. So thank you.
No, thanks very much councillor Short. And as we've touched on with the comments, I think UK Shared Prosperity Fund does support some key initiatives uh that the council uh has led on and allowed in communities, uh community groups and others to really benefit from this. Uh and I think it's really key that that support continues and hopefully um we can all be united in asking for that continued funding from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which unfortunately it seems to jump from year to year and doesn't give that stability in terms of employability funding and other key initiatives. Um but I don't see any further comments, so can this report be noted? Thank you. Uh next item, please, Arlene.
Item eight, sourcing strategies by head of the boundary. You have this for approval.
Thank you. So this item seeks approval for two sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercise for each work stream. Strategies contained in the report comprise upgrades to fire doors associated with works at St Peters and Paul's Primary School, and inspection, inspection, testing, service and maintenance of boosted water tanks and pump sets. Are there any questions? Just a minute. No, so can this item be approved? Okay, thank you. That's the business of the Fair Work and Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Sorry, Kevina, there's one more item.
Getting ahead of myself, that's where my briefing ends. If you move to the next item, please, Arlene.
Thank you. Sorry. Um item nine, tenders received by city development for children and families from twenty two to twenty four Crichton Street. This is for noting.
Thank you very much. Um any comments on this item? No, well, we'll note this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I propose we have five minutes recess for the comfort break? Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Don't see any, just take that as none.
Okay, thank you. There being no declarations, then takes you on to item two. The meeting of pension subcommittee and pension board, this is for noting.
Again, any comments and just noted? I see no comments, so just take that as noted, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Take you on to item three, support for all communities in the city. The site has been placed on the, on the. Yes, thanks for convener. Take you on to item three, support for all communities in the city. This item has been placed on the agenda in the quest of councillor Flynn. Also, I can confirm the correct name for the organisation which is referred to in the body of the agenda is the National African and Black Association.
Thank you very much, Mr Many. Would you need to speak at this point?
Convener, you may call any speaker you wish.
Thank you. Can I call in councillor Alan Nakla to speak on the motion? Thank you.
Thank you. As a member of this council, I really wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the deep grief, anger and concern that many have felt in the wake of the death of Dr Fortune Gomo. And I want to formally note our deepest condolences to her family and friends. Secondly, I want to acknowledge and thank the North African and Black Association, known as NABA, for their leadership, tireless advocacy and for raising the voices of those most affected. Their work continues to guide us toward building a more inclusive and equitable city. And it's vital that we listen and act upon the concerns that they have raised. The public meetings held by NABA not only highlighted moments of deep pain, but also broader issues of racism, safety and justice within our city. Issues that we as a council cannot and will not ignore. Through this motion, I affirm our solidarity with the black communities and all residents that have been impacted by racism and hate. State clearly and unequivocally, unequivocally, not so clearly apparently, that there is no place, no place for racism, discrimination or hatred in our city. So therefore, let this motion stand as a commitment that we hear the voices of our communities and we stand united in rejecting all forms of racism. Through both words and actions, we are committed to building a city where every resident is safe, valued and treated with dignity.
Thank you very much for those words, councillor. To you, one second.
Yeah, thank you. I think councillor Al Nakla has expressed our solidarity and our thanks to, to NABA. I think that when we talk about communities, though we, it would be remiss of us to not mention the threat to our communities. And that's the threat of the extreme right and that seems to be gaining more and more strength. And if we look at the events at the weekend in Perth and Falkirk, we have examples of extreme horror, actually, where an organisation stood outside an asylum seeker hotel with a banner saying, kill them all, with Nazi salutes. This is not acceptable in any civilised or cohesive society. And we should never be tolerating this. So when we talk about unity in our communities, we need to understand that the extreme right wing is a considerable and terrifying threat to the cohesion within our communities. If we think about how we could move forward and defeat that horror, actually, it's probably thinking about how we invest in our communities. And I want to thank the Lochie organisations and leaders within the ward after the terrible events of the, the, the killing of Dr Gomo. Because what I saw in Lochie was a genuine attempt to try and show that we were not a racist city and to try and reach out to all members of the community who were feeling scared and vulnerable and shown a genuine attempt to try and bring more cohesion and more unity within our communities. So as we kind of look and try and find ways of defeating the far right and the terror that they bring on our marginalised communities, it's worthwhile thinking that as councillors and as general people across Dundee and community leaders, that that investment in our communities involves on the groundwork with the good work that people in our communities are already doing. A safe community is an equal community and it's one that provides cohesion. There is no safety when some are feeling unsafe and some are threatened with banners saying, kill them all. We will never have a safe community unless we have cohesion.
Thank you for that. And I'll look, anybody else wish to speak on the issue? I don't see anything, but I'd just like to just confirm and agree with everything that's been said so far. I think one thing that came from the meetings that I got was we had to listen and listening was vitally important going forward. And I think we actually have to do that. And speaking to individuals and listening to the individuals at the meeting itself, on their personal experiences within the city was quite disappointing. And I think it's important we actually reach out and make sure that everyone is aware that racism in the city and this country is unacceptable in any form, which has been mentioned by my colleagues in the preceding comments. So I like the support was being put front here. And I see Billy McPherson, sorry, councillor Mills, my apologies, in a comment.
Finally, convener, I just wanted to start by passing on my deepest condolences to the family of Dr Fortune Gomo. And the murder of Dr Gomo shook the city of Dundee to its core. And as a newly elected member for the area in which the tragedy took place, I, I felt a deep responsibility to do all I could to ensure that the community felt safe. And importantly, the black community felt supported and rejected. So I reached out to Addy from NABA immediately to offer assistance. The National Black and African Association played a monumental role in bringing people together during the time of grief and uncertainty. Their leadership and compassion helped guide the community through one of its darkest moments and through their collaborative work with council officials, elected members and police. And I must say thank you to both Tony Boyle and Audrey May because yous were amazing during the whole process. But the people of Lochie in particular showed me the very best of society. They came forward not with fear but with solidarity. They wanted to help to support and to stand shoulder to shoulder with their neighbours. It was a powerful reminder of what community truly means. Let me be clear, racism in any form is unacceptable. It has no place in our city, in our institutions or in our lives. And we must stand united and reject discrimination and prejudice, not just in words but in action. Our city is home to a rich tapestry of cultures, backgrounds and experiences. The diversity is not a challenge to overcome, it's a strength to celebrate. Every community, every individual deserves to feel safe, respected and valued. And I do believe that we are committed to work with all communities. And this means listening, learning and leading with empathy. But let's just move forward now, not divided, but united in solidarity with each and every community of Dundee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mills. Billy McPherson, please.
Thank you, convener. I can completely concur with absolutely everything that has been said thus far. But I would just maybe make the point, it would be helpful if the motion concern could actually be circulated because I don't think any of us have actually seen it. And I, I would just say that having attended one of the meetings in Lochie, how, how absolutely terrible and tragic the death of Dr Gomo was and remains. But also the, the compassion of the community towards the Gomo family was very palpable from the meeting I attended. And I know, speaking to others who attended the, the other of the two meetings, it was exactly the same there. And very grateful to NABA for its positive engagement and for all it did in arranging these. And I think we can all concur that racism has no place in Dundee and across society as a whole. And I'm sure, we've not seen the motion yet, but I'm sure we can all unite behind it. And I'm grateful for it coming forward. Thank you, convener.
Thank you for those words. Mr Many, please.
Thank you, convener. As elected members will be aware, when members' items are added to the agenda, there are times when a motion is circulated. And on some occasions, elected members content themselves with the motion as is indicated in the agenda. My understanding, subject to anything else you may have to say, convener, is that there is no further motion to be circulated and that your motion is as indicated on the agenda. Could you please ask for confirmation of that first, convener?
That is confirmed, Mr Many.
Thank you. Please may also remind elected members, as I'm sure you're all aware, there is a live criminal case ongoing at the moment. And all remarks should be directed to matters other than that case. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Cookshank, please.
Thank you, convener. On behalf of the Labour group, I would like to concur with all what's been said. And I attended one of the meetings and it was, it was emotional to hear some of the things that have happened. I mean, out with the, the murder of Dr Gomo. And there was people there that were, that were genuinely feared for their own safety within the city. I've been here forty six years. And yes, I've had my fair share of racism, but that's from the minority. It's not the whole of Dundee. I would say most of Dundee are not racist, but then you do get individuals that are. And there's overt and covert racism. The overt you can deal with because it's there in your face. The covert is a bit more tricky. And so to give you an example, I stand in a shop one day in a baker shop. And I was waiting to be served. People that were getting served before me, the money was handed to them and pleasantries passed. Came to me and asked for what I wanted, slapped down on the counter, handed the money over and the money was slapped on the counter. So it exists. And this is something that we all need to work at. Where we see it, we need to call it out. And we need to stand in solidarity with a black community and all our communities. Thank you. Do you want to say any more?
No, thank you very much, especially for your personal issues with others in that particular case. That's very unsettling. And I think again, I've been talking to a number of people since these events. And I think it's important to recognise that it's not just one community. There's a number of communities are hearing what's on the news, were hearing what's in the press and they are concerned about this. And I think it's really important that we all stand together. So I like to thank all the elected members this evening for showing their solidarity and making sure that we agree that in any form of racism is unacceptable in this city and this country. Thank you very much. And we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you. Well, at least.
Yes, thank you, convener. Take you on to item four, Chief Executive Service Plan progress report, which is for noting.
Thank you. This report updates committee on the progress made during financial year twenty four, twenty five in relation to the chief executive service plan for twenty three to twenty twenty eight. Service plan, average strategic directions, key priorities, responsibilities, actions and performance indicators for the chief executive service over the five year period, reflecting priorities agreed in the city plan and council plan. I see councillor Crichton, you were first.
Thank you, convener. And I note on page fifteen, action to work with partners on digital national entitlement card is overdue. Can the committee be given a brief update on where the project has got to? And I note the Young Scot mobile app is now available, but the bus travel aspect of it is not yet covered, which obviously limits its usability. I assume this will be addressed as part of the digital NEC programme.
Thank you very much. It's working in reverse for the moment there because I've found it very discomfort to hear what you were saying there. But I'll pass you over to Andrea, please.
Thank you, convener. Thank you, councillor Crichton. So the digital NEC card is, for the travel part of it, has been run by Transport Scotland. So we're waiting for a number of aspects to be worked through. So we don't have a, a date for that as yet. So we had hoped that we would have been there by now. So that's why we've extended the date, but we are in regular discussions. The app that Young Scot have got up and running has been well received by young people. So they are keen that we push forward with the digital cards. But we're not at that stage at the moment.
Thank you. Is that your question, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, convener.
Thank you very much. I'll go to councillor Kuhn next, please.
Thank you. Good steady progress appears to be being reported across most areas of this plan. Well done. I'm particularly pleased to draw attention to the pension credit uptake campaign referenced on page five of the report. This has secured two point eight million pounds for older people across the city. This money, this is money that will be spent in our local community and so benefits not just the recipients but the wider community. Many congratulations to the welfare rights team for this excellent work.
You finished off. Thanks very much for that. And I think it's really important we did that scheme following from the UK government's decision to what they were doing to do with benefits. And I think it's important that the team worked extremely well and acknowledge your comments. Because I think it's really welcome the efforts the teams into ensuring everybody gets the benefits they need to do, young and old. So thank you. And we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Take you on to item five, neighbourhood services service plan annual progress report, this is for noting.
Thank you again. This report provides the committee with an annual update showing the progress of thirty first of March, twenty twenty five for the neighbourhood services plan. Some key achievements and developments by the service over the last year are one of Dundee being awarded a gold silver, a gold silver gilt medal, sorry, at the twenty twenty four RHS Britain and Bloomer UK finals. Also an investment of over four hundred thousand in play areas in the north east, Lochie and East End wards during twenty four, twenty five. Three hundred and forty one social housing completions achieved across the city in partnership with our registered landlords as examples. Any questions? I'll go to Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks indeed, convener. My question's really around the information on page thirty three. I should first of all say I concur with your view, there's a lot of positive achievements in this. As I say, my question's about the completion of the long tennis association funded upgrades all across Dundee's parks, tennis courts. And I think we all very much welcome that. And I, but I have to say, I've been quite disappointed in the very recent period to have been advised by users of the tennis facilities at Victoria Park that the areas that were upgraded are already impacted by things like self seeded shrubs, nettles, weeds and so on, making play difficult. Now, I reported that to the department and I have had a very fast, to its credit, response that this would be attended to. But since, and I've passed this on as well, had a similar concern raised about the situation at Dudup Park Tennis Court as well. And I think it's just, my, my comment is just that it's vitally important that where we have a positive project to upgrade something, that we may ensure that maintenance continues into the long term. So the. So the advantage that we have had in this case, thanks to the funding from the Long Tennis Association, isn't lost in the future. Thank you, convener.
No, thank you for your comments and I'll ask Mr Boyle to comment.
Thanks very much, convener. Billy McPherson, note the comments that are made, Billy McPherson, and I will pick that up with my team. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. And Councilor McHugh, please.
I have one comment and two questions. Can I just do them one after the other? Thank you. I'll do my comment first. The forward to this service plan annual report states that neighbourhood services has overseen the transformation of communities with new housing, community facilities and building a strong sense of pride and satisfaction across the city. On behalf of my constituents in the East End Ward and the wider communities across the east of our city, I beg to differ. We have seen some very welcome new housing and the recent completion of the new Drumriff Community Campus. But these achievements need to be set alongside the very real diminution of community facilities in this area of the city. So far during this council term, we have seen the Hub Library closed, Whitfield Library closed, the loss of two school swimming pools, the future of Douglas Sports Centre under review, Douglas Community Centre under threat of closure saved by the People's Voice and St Pius Primary School proposed for closure, thankfully being called in for review by the Scottish Government following appeals by the Roman Catholic Church and the local community. Communities in my ward certainly don't view this transformation as a net benefit. Rather, they have felt and continue to feel under siege from a council apparently determined to further dilute disproportionately the resources they need and deserve to alleviate the very real and well documented challenges in their communities.
Your question?
That was my comment.
Okay. You got a question?
Yes. Okay, question one. Some time ago in this chamber, I raised the issue of a lack of information within reports on housing and homelessness and was referred, I think, to this plan update for further detail. The reality is, however, that this annual report includes just one performance indicator relating to homelessness. That is the number of lets to homeless households. Considering that the Scottish Housing Regulator is sufficiently concerned that they are engaging with Dundee City Council on a quarterly basis to monitor our homelessness service performance. I'm delighted therefore to note the proposal at five-point-five in the covering report to include a number of supplementary indicators on homelessness in future iterations. Meantime, in the light of the regulator's concerns, will the executive director of neighbourhood services consider bringing a report to committee at the earliest opportunity to inform elected members of the specific concerns and the measures being put in place to alleviate these?
Want to have a second question as well at the same time, Dorothy?
Can I have that one answered?
You'll bring in first Tony. If you need to bring Louise, please feel free to.
Thanks very much, convener. Thanks, Councilor McHugh. I'm happy to consider the request you've made. Thank you.
The second question, please. That's all. Councilor McHugh.
Thank you. Eleven of the fifty-two indicators in this report are coded red and that is the worst performing indicators. Eight of these relate to housing and construction. That's eight out of the eleven relate to housing and construction. These cover repairs, relits, rent arrears, tenant satisfaction and voice. What measures will officers put in place to improve performance in these important areas?
Thank you. Please, yeah, bring in Louise, please.
No, thank you for the question, Councilor McHugh. I think there's a number of actions that you highlighted that officers are working on in terms of improving performance. And the latest update within the report reflects some of those actions being taken. I'm conscious though, however, that a number of those measures are also reported into the Housing Best Value Review Group where we take the opportunity to further scrutinise and look at what further progress can be made. And furthermore, in terms of the operational response through the repairs operations board, where we as officers look at how we progress and improve the performance overall across the service.
Thank you. Okay, Dorothy, that answers your question. Thank you. I'll go to Councilor Shaw, please.
Mine's just a note of thanks. Prior to this, I had an account of them off, twenty questions for Tony and Louise and they came back to me this afternoon with all of the answers to all of the questions. So thank you very much for that. It's appreciated. And I'm sure from everybody in the room as well.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you got your answers. Billy Scott, please.
I wanted to ask please about the number of missed occupational health appointments as detailed on page twenty-three, page twenty-three, fifty, fifty-one of the agenda. Because there's a cost implication for each appointment that's missed and also means there'll be a delay in providing the member of staff with the service, with the support that they might require. And also if you're in the process of taking unsup- unsuperspective attendance, that you would require the information for that as well. So first of all, I wanted to ask how many of these missed appointments or repeat missed appointments? And secondly, what the actual issue is, is the issue with the OHS providers system. Because I know when I've been the line manager in the past, the day before that someone's due to see OHS, I would have a wellbeing discussion with them and remind them of their appointment the next day. So I just wondered what is missing in the process that so many are being missed?
Thanks for your question. Mr Boyle?
Thanks, convener. And thanks Billy Scott for the question. Yeah, this is an issue that's extremely important to tell us in terms of managing neighbourhood services and the teams who serve within neighbourhood services. We are looking at this specific issue just now. In terms of the number of repeat appointments, I'll have to come back to you with a specific response on that. But I can tell you that we understand there's an issue in terms of the contact information. We're picking it up colleagues within corporate services. Thanks.
Question for the moment. Thank you. Billy Keenan, please.
Councilor McHugh made reference to housing, obviously, and the number of points in housing that are in the red. I'd like to somewhat be home in on a few and see if we can get maybe closer to an answer. It, the numbers of voids that we'll have comes out in a percentage. Doesn't really give me an indication of the number of houses that there is in that. Doesn't really give me an indication of the value that we're short of rental income. And I wonder if officers could provide that. It also makes reference that to, we have a forty-five-day target for turning over relits and we're setting it eighty. So there's quite a number of days where there's rent coming in for that. And also here from the trade unions that we're moving towards giving out decoration vouchers as opposed to doing the work, which I'm really concerned about, given that we set a relit standard. And that relit standard was to get the houses into a position that they were of good, clean and well presented. Previously, when it was vouchers that were given out, then there'd become a market for trading them for other people to be spending them and being cured wherever we were placing the vouchers with. And I can understand that when people are short of money, it would be good to do that. But if that was a five-hundred-pound voucher, it's five-hundred-pound, no improving our quality of house in any way whatsoever if it's sold on in another market. So concerned about really where we are in housing, concerned about the figures and voids. And every property that's empty is a family no housed and a thousand pound at least worth of council tax not coming in. So there needs to be some level of focus.
Thank you. I think previous reports highlighted the importance of getting the voids back into use. And I'll bring in Louise. She'll have the details and the numbers on that. But there's been quite significant progress made on that going forward. But Louise, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And as the report highlights, the annual figures up to the thirty-first of March was shown that there was three hundred and fourteen mainstream voids at that time and thirty-three temporary accommodation voids at that time. And the void rental cost, the void rental loss for the year was two million, just over two million pound. And committee will recall that there was a targeted plan put in place in terms of our relit recovery and work continues to focus on that in terms of maintaining the sufficient level of turnover for voids. In response to your query on decoration, our letting standard does highlight the level that properties will be returned for let and it stipulates that ceilings and walls will be in a good condition. And also aligning that with the Scotch housing quality standard, which doesn't prescribe specific aesthetic standards. What we have seen and been doing for a period of time over the past year is where property can be awarded with a decoration voucher, that we will do so. But where a property does require decoration, the service will continue to do that. And we're monitoring that in terms of tenant returns and information and feedback.
Thank you. Can I just follow up on the actual vouchers and just ensuring that the vouchers are used? Because I think it's quite concerning what Billy Keenan's saying with regards to a currency being created here. Can maybe just ask that this is maybe looked into and then come back with a further detail if needed. Thank you. I don't see any further questions. We'll take that report as agreed or noted. Thank you very much. Next one, Wally, please.
Okay, thank you. Take Shaun Titan, six, capital expenditure monitoring report. This is for noting.
And just a regular capital monitoring. Councilor Duncan, please. I see you're there.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just a quick question around five-point-two-point-twelve on page fifty-six. It speaks about a reduction of some point nine-six-four million pounds in expenditure for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. I mean, I think we're all keen to see as much as we can do come about, you know, to degenerate the city centre. I certainly get quite a number of the comments from residents and I'm just really wondering why is it that that money, the expenditure of that money has been put back? And is there really nothing that could have been done this, this, without that money now?
Thank you. Mr Thompson, please.
Thank you, convener and councillor for the question. I can confirm I don't have the detail in terms of why this particular project has been deferred. I would remind members that the budget, of course, was set some time ago and it's possible that changes have arisen since that point in time. But happy to come back to all members with a more detailed explanation in terms of why this specific project has been deferred.
Thank you very much. Ask your question, Craig? Well, sort of. But I mean, I certainly, certainly look forward to hearing the answer. Thanks. Okay, thanks very much for that. And all elected members got a copy of that as well. I see no further questions, so we can take that report as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Wally, please.
Thank you. Take Shaun Titan, seven, revenue monitoring. You'd ask you the recommendations.
Thank you. Just again, the review and monitoring as per usual. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks, convener. This revenue monitoring report covers only the first two months. So an overspend in the general fund of over five million already at this very, very early stage is surely a concern. I was wondering if officers could give an indication as to why, covering really only eight weeks of the financial year, we already have an overspend of over five million. Now, in part, it can be explained by the information on page seventy-two, where it indicates that city development has an overspend of three-point-six million around property repairs in eight weeks. So could I really have a, an explanation as to why we already have that overspend eight weeks into the financial year? Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Mr Thompson, please.
Thank you, convener, and thanks Billy McPherson for the question. So I can confirm that the estimate in relation to property costs is on the basis that the expenditure was in line with the previous year. Members will recall that the unaudited accounts for the year, there was an overspend of three million pounds in terms of property, notwithstanding that as the report outlines, as a group being set up to look specifically at these issues and identify where any reduction can be made against these budgets. And this is based on the position for the first two months of the year. And albeit there is obviously a period of time before the end of the financial year when there'll be the opportunity to review that, but it is only an estimate at this stage.
Thank you for that. And I'll be forward and further reports coming forward. Does that answer your question, Billy McPherson?
Well, I would just, my pattern shot on that would really be, I'm glad that there's a bit of a review going on. And the obvious thing about property is that if we're three-point-six million overspent eight weeks in, then clearly the budget's not right. So the need for a review is obvious. If you follow the, you know, taking the whole of the general fund, if you followed that trajectory, we would have a thirty-million-pound overspend by the end of the year. So I'm reassured that, you know, Mr Thompson and colleagues are on the case. And obviously we'll watch very carefully in future revenue monitoring reports. But it did actually jump out the page at me that we had a, an overspend of five million just eight weeks into the financial year.
Okay, thanks for your comments. It's important the transparency is there and that's why these regular reports come to the committee. But I'll bring in Mr Thompson just to address some of the points, huh?
Thanks again. Just for clarity, Billy McPherson, the three-point-six million is an estimate of what the projected overspend would be at the end of the year if expenditure have continued at the current level. It's not the case that three-point-six million pounds has been overspent in the first two months.
Thank you. Clarity. Billy Keenan, please. Thank you.
So it's probably a similar question as to whether the budget was right to start with. But a gate fees for MEB, surely we knew that in advance and, you know, the decrease in, I think the electricity is produced or the income from lines one and two. You know, it seems to be, it seems to be a lot or change there. Surely we should have knew what the gate fee was. Have we not set that properly?
Thanks for your question. Mr Boyle, please.
Thanks, convener. Billy Keenan. The gate fee is set through the contract in terms of the main twenty-eight-year contract we've got with line three. In terms of lines one and two, the gate fee is set by MEB. It's part of our lifetime extension arrangement for lines one and two. And it's not entirely in our gift to control that. In terms of the electricity and the wider gate fee and the impact on gate fee and electricity values, we deal with energy from waste in a volatile market. So therefore it's very difficult to predict in advance what the outcome will be. And at the time, the estimates were made, they were the best estimates we had available, given the information we had available at the time. And that's, that's what's led to that issue.
Thanks very much.
We could ask if there's any measures that we believe could be in place in partnership, working with them to reduce that, especially when I'm looking at other deans being without a waste plan for a period of time going to landfall. Would there have been an opportunity there?
Thanks. I think it's been answered with regards to contract, but I'll let you come back in.
Yeah, just to give some reassurance that we do work regularly with MEB to get the best possible estimates. And in fact, Dundee's, Dundee and Agassiz's relationship with MEB is deemed to be one of the most successful, if not the most successful of all within Scotland in terms of that arrangement. Thanks, convener.
Thanks again. I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Wally, please.
Okay, thank you. Take Shaun Titan, me, scrutiny committee annual report, which is for noting.
The report informs committee of the work undertaken by the scrutiny committee during twenty-four, twenty-five and its role as the audit committee for the council. See no comments. But as a convener, Billy Keenan, would you like to say any words on the report? Oh, I should. Okay, okay. Right. Thanks. I give you the offer. Thanks very much. We'll take that as agreed then. Next one, please.
Okay, thank you. Take Shaun Titan, nine, Dundee's Covid Memorial Remembering Together report. Passing you the recommendations.
This report updates committee on the actions taken to co-create Dundee's community Covid memorial as part of the National Remembering Together project and provides an outline of the memorial design, proposed construction timeline and location. I think this is great to see a number of workshops and drop-in sessions were held across Dundee with participants to co-create the designs itself. Concept selected was a memorial takes in the form of a labyrinth with surrounding garden to reflect unexpected twists and turns experienced during the pandemic. So anticipate the groundwork will start in late summer and two, six weeks. And it's gone again. And it's gone again.